I'd like to call a May 15th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First order of business would be invocation by interim county manager, Mr. David Cotton.
Mr. Price. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Please bless all of those who have gathered here this evening. Lord, be with the Commissioners tonight in their deliberation and grant them wisdom and guidance as they weigh the priorities for Onslow County in the upcoming fiscal year. Tonight, we recognize our emergency medical services employees for their life-saving efforts. We are grateful to these men and women and their devotion to the citizens of Onslow County. We pray you will keep them safe and give them wisdom and strength to be at their best when confronted with the worst. Father, we pray for the men and women in our armed forces who serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. We will continue to thank you and praise you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. Now, in deep reverence for the faiths, traditions, and beliefs gathered here tonight, hear us in a moment of silence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cotton, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our elected person tonight, Sheriff Miller. Thank you, sir, for coming and being with us tonight. I think that's everyone. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers two opportunities to speak during the meeting. Comments during the first public comment period should be limited to three minutes each and must be directly issue-oriented with the agenda item for this particular meeting. The second public comment period is at the end of the meeting and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. During the second public comment period, citizens can address the Board for up to five minutes. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual Commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is intended to require the Board to answer any -- not required to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in language and presentation. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules and procedures, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioners' comment period at the end of the meeting. No other items being considered separately. A motion to adopt the meeting agenda is in order.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any Board member that has questions or concerned about any items on the consent agenda, please let us be notified of them so we can remove them to another section for consideration at the end of the meeting. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's had it. I think we're into Section 3 now, Public Comment Section. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. No one has signed up for the first public comment period.
Okay. Section 4 is Presentations. NCA 11 Safe Digging Partner Award. Is that yours, Mr. Cotton?
I'll take that, yes, sir. Onslow County Fire Marshal's Office has been chosen as the North Carolina 811 Safe Digging Partner for May of 2017 due to its ongoing commitment to safety, damage prevention, and spreading the "call before you dig" message to the public. Mr. Howard Corey, Education Liaison for North Carolina 811, will present the award to Mr. Brian Kelly, Onslow County Fire Marshal.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Howard Corey. I'm Education Liaison with North Carolina 811. We are the notification center in North Carolina for anybody planning to do excavation. You contact us, then we in turn contact member utilities in the area that allow them time to come out, locate their utilities, so nobody would damage them in the process of you digging, whether you're doing it as a professional or doing it as a homeowner, those kinds of things. So it gives you the opportunity to know where the utilities are and avoid personal injury potentially or damage to facilities. So we serve that role. We also have a program that we call a Safe Digging Partner, and we have people that sign up for that. They commit to be Safe Digging Partners. They follow the Safe Digging Rules. They always call before they dig, and they promote that safety message. We give them stickers. They put them on their trucks, equipment, vehicles, hard hats and stuff, trying to promote that out in the community. We also like to take opportunities and highlight some of those Safe Digging Partners, especially the ones that go above and beyond. So that brings us here tonight with Brian Kelly and Onslow County Fire Marshal's Office because they have gone above and beyond in some of the things they're doing. Let me list you three of the things that they have done. Number one is he's been a big promoter of a contest we have had with rural fire departments across the state. They are -- those first responders are real important when you have an emergency. If you have a gas line that's leaking and they have to respond, he's been a big promoter of that. So we work with the fire departments, and we give banners, and they put them out in front of the fire stations, and you may have seen some across Onslow County promoting the message, know what's below, call before you dig. Even at a recent conference, Fire Life Safety Conference, I believe it was, in his presentation, he was encouraging people to go by our booth and pick up the banners, so much to the point we ran out, and that's a good thing. So we get that message out in the community all the way across the state. He's also involved in the local utility coordinate committee meeting that meets here in Jacksonville, where the municipalities in Jones and Onslow County, they come together with the utility providers and contractors and talk about issues they're having out in the field to try to promote safety and avoiding damages of their facilities. And thirdly, last year, Brian was instrumental. It was actually his brainstorming idea. I remember sitting in his office. He'd come up with this idea about getting the major utilities. Got somebody from Jones-on-Slow EMC, somebody from Onwassa, and somebody from Piedmont Natural Gas, and over a period of five months, he planned those meetings where we met with all the rural fire departments in Onslow County to bring those players together to say, here's what happens in an emergency, and here's what role each of you need to play. So each of those utilities had an opportunity to share with the rural fire departments, these are the dangers in dealing with this utility, and this is what you can do, and this is what you need to let us do. So awesome. Heard great comments from that. Awesome. That's something probably every county in North Carolina would benefit from doing, is getting those players together before an emergency happens so each one of them know what to do. So those are just some of the things that qualified Brian as being a Safe Digging Partner. So Brian, let me present this to you. This certificate is awarded to Onslow County Fire Marshal's Office for spreading the message of safe digging and educating the public about the importance of calling 811 to protect the underground facilities from damage. Congratulations.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I just want to quickly say thank you to the volunteer departments. Actually, they're the catalyst behind this. They have a need, and Howard and I are just the one that can help facilitate that need, as well as 811. I mean, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have a message to share. So collectively, I'd like to thank them for that. So thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Presentation or proclamation, another?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If it pleases the Board, I'll read this into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, proclamation, Emergency National -- correction, Emergency Medical Services Week, May 21st through May 27th, 2017. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners declares the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Onslow County, and encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities presented this 15th day of May, 2017. The Chairman has requested that Commissioner Mark Price present the proclamation.
If you've ever had a moment where you've had to call 911, it's comforting to know that on the other end of that line, there's somebody that's highly qualified, that's trained to do their job, and that's going to arrive as quickly as possible and be there and provide the medical attention that you need. And so I am honored to present on behalf of the Board to Mr. Bryson the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you, sir.
First of all, I would like to thank our county Commissioners and our county administration for taking the opportunity to recognize all of our paramedics and our medical -- field medical providers that we have in Onslow County. In 2016, last year, I was one of those individuals where my wife had to call 911 and one of my own ambulances had to come out and get me. And one of the young ladies in the back of the ambulance that night looked at me as she was getting ready to put an IV in my hand and say, if this hurts, are you going to fire me? Of course not. Of course, it also is good tonight as she is one of the individuals here that's being recognized tonight. It's not for me, but, you know, EMS puts a lot of heart and backbone in everything that they do. They have a lot of long days and long nights, and they are there always for our citizens, and we're always very proud of everything that they do. One of the last things I want to take the opportunity is the gentleman standing next to me, most people may or may not recognize me, is Mr. David Grovedahl. He's our new EMS Division Head that comes here from Oklahoma. He started this week three, starting today, so we're very proud to have him on board with us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. I remember last year when we were doing some EMS stats and reports and stuff, and the numbers that -- the number of calls that EMS and -- I'm sure that number has grown since last year, but the number of calls that EMS actually went on and people they served was the same number of the people that's our population, over 200,000, calls that they went on. That number may have grown some by now or may be in that same range, but it's amazing the number of calls that our EMS responds to, and it gets more and more needed every year. Next item is Item C, where we get a chance to recognize some of the emergency responders and life-saving techniques and the people that you've touched their lives in many ways. Mr. Cotton, I guess you can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Members of the Emergency Medical Services are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They often serve as a safety net for America's health care system. There are several factors that make a significant impact on a patient's quality of life following a dramatic illness such as sudden cardiac arrest or a heart attack. These factors include rapid and safe response, the skills of the paramedics providing the care, the system's overall education, and a dedication to saving lives. I will call on Mr. Norman Bryson, Emergency Services Director, to call the names of our EMS staff being recognized this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. As we start tonight, we actually, in the beginning of this, we have 21 individuals that last year they either helped in the birth of a child or in saving a life. Now, not all of the 21 were able to be here with us this evening, but the ones that we are, we're very proud to recognize. The first name I want to call out is Mr. John Gray, who's recognized for Paramedic of the Year for Onslow County.
Y'all want to hear that?
Next is Ms. Angela Adams, recognized for field delivery of a baby girl on August Next is Ms. Megan Brown, recognized for saving a life on January 27th, 2016.[1018.12][1018.12](APPLAUSE). Mr. Chris Dudley, recognized for field delivery of a baby girl on March 13th, 2016.[1032.44][1032.44](APPLAUSE). Mr. Zach Hurl, recognized for saving a life on January 27th, 2016.[1043.16][1043.16](APPLAUSE). Ms. Amanda Hurl, recognized for saving a life on June 9th, 2016.[1054.23][1054.23](APPLAUSE). Mr. Jaime Lozano, recognized for saving a life on December 24th, 2016.[1065.73][1065.73](APPLAUSE). Ms. Deborah Miller, recognized for field delivery of a baby girl on August 5th, 2016.[1077.51][1077.51](APPLAUSE). Ms. Brittany Parker, recognized for saving a life on December 24th, 2016.[1093.73][1093.73](APPLAUSE). Mr. Alex Tremaine, recognized for saving a life on June 9th, 2016.[1105.66][1105.66](APPLAUSE). And one last one, Mr. Jason Alberti.[1117.01][1117.01](APPLAUSE).
Okay, Section, Item 5, Section A, Set Public Hearing for Proposed Budget and Budget Presentation by David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. It's my privilege to present the fiscal year 2017-2018 draft budget document. Tonight, I would like to review the following topics with you. To begin with, the budget process, how we got to this point, and what is remaining. Also, I'd like to talk about the Board's goals and objectives that were identified in our budget retreat, as well as the mandates and the implications on not just Onslow County's budget, but all budgets statewide at the county level. Then, want to focus in on the revenue and expenditure projections, then really drill down to our budget overview, and then wrap it up with where we go from here, our next So the fiscal year 2017-2018 draft budget document was prepared in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. The draft budget document as presented is balanced and accounts for all mandated programs and according funding. Although this presentation may be measured in minutes, and I know you hope it is, the dedication and this actual document itself represents almost 1,000 hours of work, dedication, and time of everyone who had a hand in its crafting and development. The budget is one of the most important annual documents that any local government will undertake. It represents the organization's plan for service delivery and demonstrates accountability to the taxpayers. It identifies where and how we will spend the taxpayers' dollars. We formally began the process with the Commissioners' workshop in January. Immediately following that, your goals and objectives were disseminated to all department agencies and office directors. These directors had, between February and April, to formulate their operating budget to include ongoing capital as well as personnel requests, to be in harmony with those goals and objectives. Outside agencies, of course, submitted their funding applications according to the timeline established by the Commissioners. The budget team met with all of the individual departments, agencies, and offices making up our organization. We looked at their individual requests, discussing that, asking questions, receiving feedback. From there, the budget team met, and we took a look at the budget on a line-item basis. So as the budget officer, I met with the Commissioners in groups of two to give you a more in-depth review and briefing of the budget than we're receiving here tonight. Following this, Commissioners' workshop is scheduled for May 24th at 9:00 a.m. here in the Government Center, and if it pleases the Board, we would have a public hearing on Monday, June 5th at 6:00 p.m., which is the new meeting time for the Commissioners. Depending on the feedback and input received from that public hearing, the Commissioners may choose to hold another workshop, but ultimately, the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget ordinance must be adopted by June 30th according to the North Carolina General Statute. So staff used the Board's goals and objectives as our guiding principles and keystone for the development of the fiscal year draft document in front of you. The budget message illustrates multiple examples of that nexus between the Commissioners' goals and objectives and specific recommendations. It was really important that we demonstrated the incorporation of your guidance and wanted to call specific attention to that. I mentioned mandates. Each year when we start the budget development process, we're faced with the realization that 81% of our budget is intrinsically linked to mandates, whether those are program mandates with funding level requirements or program mandates with discretionary dollars attached to them. Of course, program mandates with the mandated dollars, the most obvious example would be our debt service. Examples of program mandates and discretionary dollars would be the school system, sheriff's office, specific programs within social services. Leaving a remaining 19%, which is truly discretionary at the local level, and of course, that would be Parks and Rec and our library systems. So of the proposed $250 million budget, approximately $174.2 million is tied directly to a mandate. Want to talk a little bit about our revenue and some of those projections. Approximately 63% of all revenues come from two main sources, those being property tax and sales tax. The county's tax base continues to maintain its value and grow at what I would characterize as a sustainable rate. We are projecting about a 1.6% increase over fiscal year 2016-2017, and Onslow County's position as a regional hub for retail is actually growing and strengthening. We are projecting an increase of 5.74% over fiscal year 1617. So it's really strong growth. That 5.74% equates to $2.3 million roughly. And lastly, the recommended fund balance is 4.2% less than fiscal year 1617. It's important, and I wanted to point this out, to demonstrate that although we were conservative on our revenue projections, we did not increase fund balance, the fund balance appropriation, to offset those conservative approaches. Within expenditures, as you can see, there are three large slices of the pie. 75% of our expenditures are tied to three primary functions, those being human services, public safety, and education. So fiscal year 2017-2018 represents our final year for our quadrennial planning cycle, and I had to practice that not to mess it up multiple times, which was certainly established to coincide with our revaluation cycle. And the rationale for establishing a quadrennial planning cycle was to identify our near-term and our midterm funding requirements for our organization, as well as identifying and establishing a tax rate sufficient to meet those needs. As presented, the fiscal year 2017-2018 draft budget recommends a tax rate of .67.5 cents per $100 valuation, which does address Goal 1 of the Commissioners of not raising taxes. As stated previously, the Commissioners' goals and objectives served as our guiding principles and keystones for the development of the draft document. Specific recommendations are highlighted to illustrate staff's commitment to implementing the Board's guidance and direction. As you can see here, the total requests submitted by all departments, offices, and agencies totaled $223.9 million, which, as a point of comparison, was $10.1 million more than was funded for fiscal year 1617, and $8.3 million more than is being recommended for fiscal year 1718. For all funds, it is recommended $215.6 million, which year-over is $1.8 million. For all funds, it is recommended $215.6 million, which year-over is $1.8 million more than fiscal year 1617. So, when I talk about these recommendations and the recommendations that we've discussed in detail, all of those combined with the reductions in other areas, the net was $1.8 million. Within the general funds, looking at $204.6 million, which is just over $2.2 million over fiscal year 1617. Want to highlight several expenditure functions here. Education is projected to increase 2.75%, and that education number does include both the Onslow County School System, as well as the Coastal Carolina Community College. Public safety is recommended to increase about 4.8%. Within general fund, correction, general government recommending a decrease of 6.4%. And all of these are in comparison to fiscal year 1617. Our debt service, do want to point out that it's going up almost 11%, but that's directly attributable to the vehicle maintenance and the consolidated human services, that full debt load coming online in this upcoming fiscal year, which explains the entire difference, minus a little bit. Within human services, we're projecting a decrease of just over 1%. The Commissioners identified education as a top priority. The fiscal year 1718 draft budget recommends fully funding the joint funding formula agreement between Onslow County and the Onslow County School System. This equates to approximately a $2.5 million increase. And this represents the importance of, correction, this represents the implementation of Goal One of the Commissioners, which was main, Goal Two, to maintain the current funding formula. Further, it is recommended that Coastal Carolina Community College's operating budget be increased by $100,000, and that their capital outlay contribution be increased by $150,000. Moving on to human services, the Commissioners seeded a mental health task force charged with researching, analyzing, and ultimately making a recommendation concerning the opening of a mental health and substance abuse crisis intervention center. The Onslow County Board of Commissioners, along with the Jacksonville City Council, identified a service gap and a service need within our community and decided to act. The Castlight Health Report in an article titled "The Opioid Crisis in America's Workforce" ranked Jacksonville 12th in the nation for opioid abuse. It was reported that 8.2% of individuals who received an opioid prescription did not take it as prescribed. Funding for the region's mental health management organization is in the proposed fiscal year 1718 budget. It's anticipated that the Mental Health Task Force will present a recommendation to the appropriate decision-making, correction, the appropriate decision-makers by the fourth quarter of 2017. Lastly, as a direct correlation to the opioid crisis, two new social workers assigned to the foster care program are recommended as part of this budget as well. These recommendations support Goal Three of finding a cost-effective means to bring back a crisis center. Moving on to public safety. In response to implementing the Commissioners' directives for Goal Four, the fiscal year 2017-2018 draft budget recommends additional personnel for the sheriff's office, with the exact composition and number to be determined by the board at an upcoming Commissioners' workshop. It's also recommended that one ambulance crew be added, which would consist of eight new paramedics. It will not require the purchase of a new ambulance, as the vision and the wisdom of the Commissioners to fund our vehicle replacement plan. Our fleet is in such good repair at this point that we can actually take one that is in rotation and place it into, in full-time service. In terms of capital, it is recommended that a new climate, well, new climate control equipment be installed for the dog kennel at Animal Services. This capital improvement will ensure compliance with state standards, improve general conditions for staff and animals in the county's charge. Now, in recognition of the invaluable partnership the county enjoys with our volunteer fire departments and volunteer rescue squads, it's recommended that the total contribution be increased by 2.2%. Again, the fiscal year 1718 draft budget recommends the continued funding of the information technology and vehicle replacement plans. Moving on to transparency and responsiveness, in response to the Commissioners' directive to improve transparency and responsiveness, I'm proposing a multitude of all volunteer committees to be established. Onslow County government has within its ranks some of the most talented, intelligent, and dedicated staff. Therefore, enlisting those I know to be the best in local government to identify the opportunities and challenges, then asking them to implement the policies and programs to make us a better organization is by far the best approach. Now, these committees with a specific task and purpose will be just that. Once they have met their objective, they will disband. However, you know, there are others which will remain standing committees, and one that I'm especially excited about is the Idea Incubator Committee. This committee will take on challenges and opportunities which are organization-wide and driven by the committee membership. They'll be charged with thinking creatively, to be innovative, and to challenge conventional practices. Again, Onslow County government has within its ranks talent, ideas, passion, and dedication ready to be offered. And with the board's blessing, I'll ask our staff to help us move our organization forward. These committees represent staff's efforts to implement Goal Five and Objective Two. Almost done, I promise. So, next steps, where do we go from here? Commissioners' workshop, again, is scheduled for Wednesday, May 24th at 9:00 a.m. here at the Government Center. And if it pleases the Board, a public hearing will be set for Monday, June 5th at 6:00 p.m. And depending on the feedback and input received at the public hearing, the Commissioners may choose to call another workshop. But ultimately, the fiscal year 1718 budget ordinance must be adopted by June 30th, according to North Carolina General Statutes. And one last thing, I want to thank all of the staff, and specifically the budget team, for all of their hard work in putting this document together. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this concludes my presentation of the fiscal year 1718 draft budget document.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. As you know, David is interim county manager, and he was charged with the task to put the budget together. And I applaud you, Mr. Cotton, for your hard work and the time spent by not only you, but the staff and the folks that put it together. You did a good job, and we heard a lot of good things in the one-on-one meeting that we had with you to kind of streamline the ideas for all the Commissioners to get to this point. And I really appreciate what you did, and the people can be proud to have you as somebody that's working to put together a budget that was going to be, I thought, difficult, and it is difficult. But you were tasked with some five different ideas and top priorities that was designated by this board, and I think you have addressed all five of those. And I think everybody up here is pleased with the way it was presented. And we're looking forward to the workshop, we're looking forward to the public hearing, and we're looking forward to adopting our budget on June 30th or before. I think next item is to set the public hearing. We need a motion for that.
Send it.
Got a motion and a second for a public hearing on June 5th at 6 o'clock, our next meeting, this will be the last meeting that starts at 7:00. Our next meeting from here on out will be starting at 6:00. Any discussion? All in favor of the public hearing on June 5th? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Childcare subsidy, Sherry Slater?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
We got you.
You got me. The Department of Social Services is responsible for providing the childcare subsidy program. This is a program that subsidizes quality childcare for working families or families who are trying to go to school so that they can become gainfully employed. Since 2014, Onslow County has contracted this service through the Onslow County Partnership for Children. That service is federally and state-funded, there are no county dollars attached to the program. We do believe that the contract has been beneficial, as it allows our citizens to access that service at their first point of contact with the childcare industry. It is the department's recommendation that we continue this contract. The contract for the fiscal year is actually June 1st through May 31st, so that's why we're bringing it a little bit early. Again, it is state and federal dollars, so there aren't any county dollars attached. We would respectfully request that you consider approval of this contract for the upcoming fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Slater?
Do we know how many people have been served through the Partnership for Children? Is that data available, or?
It is available, sir. I don't have the exact number with me, but I'd be more than happy to get that for you and provide it at a future date.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Landfill leachate acceptance agreement. Mr. Boss, Scott Boss?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. The Medeville Road landfill is a fully lined, subtitled municipal solid waste landfill. The operation of a line landfill produces two byproducts, gas and leachate. These byproducts must be managed and controlled and maintained in the environmental integrity of the landfill. One of these products, methane, is currently collected and managed and used in the production of electricity. The other byproduct is, of course, leachate, which is the liquid produced when water percolates through the garbage. This liquid must be managed as well. The preferred and most environmentally productive management of this leachate is to discharge it to a wastewater treatment facility. In 2001, the county installed a sewer force main along Medeville Road to transport leachate from the landfill to the city Jacksonville's wastewater treatment facility on Fire Tower Road. During the period of operation, this method of managing leachate was very successful and agreeable to both parties. Therefore, it is desire of the Solid Waste Department of Onslow County to reestablish the management of the leachate through this proposed agreement.
Any questions for Mr. Boss?
I make a motion to approve. And I'd like to say a couple of things. I'd like to say thanks to the city of Jacksonville, and thanks to our two board members up here that sit down on Wausau, Chairman and Vice Chair. I mean, it's been a big help to us and the city stepping forward to help us out with that, and I want to thank everybody that participated. So, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
You know how much we're pumping?
Excuse me?
How much leachate we're pumping?
Forty-five thousand gallons per day.
Forty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand. Yes, sir. Yep.
Leachate for the ones that...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Leachate is for the ones that don't know, like you said, it's just rainwater that falls on the landfill, and then it collects in the bottom, and by statute, we have to, we can't just pump it out. It has to be treated. And there was the Onwassa Treatment Plant in Richlands, when we were sending it up there, their particular system did not treat, was not able to treat that, and it was actually damaging their plant. So, we had to reverse the flow back from Northwest Plant in Richland back to Jacksonville. And Jacksonville has such a big volume of capacity, it's like a drop of water in the ocean, it just dissipates, and I guess there was some term that calls dissolution is dilution. So, anyway, Jacksonville was kind enough to take the leachate from us back, and we wrestled with it at our Onwassa meeting back and forth, but they took it back. And actually, Jacksonville's going to run a new trunk line that goes through that area, and they'll pick up that leachate in that pipe, and Jacksonville's agreed to accept it. So, like Commissioner Buchanan said, thank you, Jacksonville, and everybody that worked this out to get us back online with that problem. Other than that, motion and a second. We are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Boss. Okay, we at the appointments now for extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jacksonville.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, Act 362, the extraterritorial jurisdiction representative for the city of Jacksonville's Board of Adjustments shall be appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Albert W. Burgess, Jr. has expressed an interest in continuing serving on this board, and has provided a citizen participation application. This vacancy has been advertised. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office.
Motion to approve.
Send it.
Motion to approve, a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Jury commission, section B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The Onslow County Jury Commission consists of three members. One member of the commission shall be appointed by the senior resident Superior Court Judge, one member by the Clerk of Superior Court, and one member by the Board of Commissioners. The appointees shall be qualified voters of the county and shall serve for two-year terms. Appointees may be reappointed to successive terms. Ms. Jo. B. Williams has expressed she does not wish to continue her service as the Commissioner Representative. Ms. Deborah T. Barnes has expressed a willingness to serve on this commission and has provided a citizen participation application for consideration. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. This vacancy has been advertised. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office.
Motion to approve the appointment.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Coastal Carolina Community College trustee, board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In most academic years, one of the four trustees that are appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners is in his or her fourth year and must be reappointed in order to continue serving. Every third year, two currently serving trustees must be reappointed. Mr. Steven Tyler Hart, Commissioner Representative, term will expire on June 30th, 2017. Mr. Hart has expressed an interest in continuing serving on this board and has provided a citizen participation application. The vacancy has been advertised. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Animal Services Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Advisory Committee is composed of seven members appointed by the Onslow County Board of Commissioners, and shall serve at the pleasure of the board. The Advisory Committee was created to advise the Onslow County Animal Services Director with respect to animal services matters. In conducting its business, the Animal Services Advisory Committee shall comply with all applicable North Carolina laws, including but not limited to open meetings laws, public records laws. Staff has received applications for consideration from the following individuals. Dr. Robert Shigog, Jr., veterinarian category. Dr. Robert Shigog, Jr., veterinarian category. Ms. Toni O'Neal, animal welfare rescue category. Mr. Ronnie Cox. Mr. Gary Evans. Ms. Mary Ann Fassbender. Ms. Amanda Rocker. Ms. Mary Thomas. And Ms. Susan Tooman, all at large category. These vacancies have been advertised. The applications are on file and have been certified by the clerk's office. For the board's convenience, staff has prepared a ballot for the at-large member. Specific action requested is respectfully considered the appointment of Dr. Robert M. Shigog, Jr. for veterinarian category. Ms. Toni O'Neal, animal welfare rescue category for a three-year term expiring May 16th, 2020. Consider two individuals for a remaining three-year term expiring May 16th, 2019, and three individuals for a three-year term expiring on May 16th, 2020.
David, do we need the doctor and the Ms. Toni O'Neal do them first before we do the ballot?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
I would make a motion to Dr. Shigog and Toni O'Neal Welfare to sit on the board. That's the two separate ones?
Yes, that's separate, isn't it?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor of those two nominees? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we can, we do two ballots, one for two, and then we get another ballot to pick the final three?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. While Mr. DeSelmus is handing you the next ballots, we'll report that the board has selected Mr. Ronnie Cox and Mr. Gary Evans to serve the remaining three-year terms expiring May 16th, 2019. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The board has selected Ms. Mary Ann Fassbender, Ms. Amanda Rocker, and Ms. Susan Tooman to serve the three-year terms expiring May 16th, 2020.
Okay. We didn't have anything for the consent agenda items and we back up now on section eight for, item eight for a public comment. Anyone signed up for the last few minutes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we do have one person signed up for the second public comment period. It is Mr. Thomas Mailam of Independence Drive, Jacksonville.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Tom Mailam, 626 Independence Drive, Jacksonville. And I'm here representing the Quanis Club of Onslow County. A few months ago, we came up with the, and by the way, I'm not asking for any money, so I'm not going to mess up the budget that we just heard about. We came up with the idea for a project that identified a need in Onslow County with some campsites. And so we addressed the Boy Scout Leadership Council and said, if we build it, would they come? And they said they would use it, each one of their scout groups at least once a year. There are equal, there are 1,500 Boy Scouts, there's equal number of Girl Scouts, and they have endorsed the idea also. Presently, the camp, only campsite is Brewster. It's been used for many years on the base and has two problems with it. Number one, enhanced security has made it more difficult to get on the base unless you're active duty or retired, and believe it or not, there's some of us who don't fit that category. And the second thing is the new Wilson Bridge Boulevard kind of cuts right through the Brewster camp area. So we have approached the County Recs Department, Parks and Recs, and discussed with them the possibility of using some of our existing facilities to put a campsite in. And right now, we're looking at the idea of the DEPI playground that's up Highway 17 on the right-hand side in Hoffman Forest. And what we want to do is, you know, there's the children's playground there and there's some bathrooms, well, you could, and a nice parking facility. And then if you go for the walk up through there that was put in by the Jacksonville Quanis Club a number of years ago, and I walked it the other day with my wife and my dog, and identified potential sites where we would, the Quanis Club would pay to go off the trail with enough room for the kids to walk and then clear out a campsite, bush hog it or whatever, and put in a fire pit. That's one of our main concerns is control of fire. And that would be one, we put two of them in. These are what I call passive campsites. There is no water, as you know, up there, so this campsite would be used by kids to go and, you know, cook a meal, put their sleeping bags up, put their tents in, do passive activities because there's no water-type activities there. If we're successful in phase one in getting the DEPI thing done, we would like to come before you and ask to do another one somewhere where there is water because much of the scouting activities are embedded in use of water, canoeing, kayaking, things like that, swimming. And we'd like to do that somewhere. We've just been brainstorming the idea, possibly doing it at the end of Corridor Boulevard here, all the way down in the woods where it hits the New River would be a fabulous place for a campsite. But that's phase two. Right now, we're working on phase one, the campsites at DEPI. In order to do that, I've written a letter to the Parks and Rec asking them to do this, and my understanding is they have to contact the Hoffman Forest people to get their permission because right now campsites are not part of the allowed purposes to the DEPI park. So assuming that we get that approval from them, then my club would pay for the cost of putting the campsites in, and I don't anticipate there being hardly any maintenance on them. There's just the issue of if Royce was the camp leader and wanted to use it in June the 8th, then he would have to contact Parks and Rec to get a key because there, as you know, the parks are locked up at dusk. And so the scout leader would have to be able to get in and open it up in an emergency to get out at night. So that's the plan. This is for information purposes mostly, and I thank you for your time. I'll answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Manager's comments. Mr. Cotton?
I don't have any this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You gave us a pretty good comment earlier.
Long-winded.
Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Buchanan?
Mr. Mailam? I would get up at Hammocks Beach State Park and talk to them. There's a lot of campsites that they're fixing to put in on the new, that land they just acquired. I know Mike McQ's sitting in the front row. He knows quite a bit about it like I do, but that'd be a good idea because there's water access there quite a bit. Today, I had the opportunity to go over to One D. Witt Street. Those of you who don't know Dr. Ken and Mary Morgan, Sherry Slater, I was with her today, and I thanked Sherry for being there. And the Morgans are very deep in my heart because I've been knowing them for many, many years, and they've done a lot for this community, but they donated their building at One D. Witt Street to Caring and Community Clinic of Onslow County Community Outreach. It used to be their office space and they donated it. And I go way back with the Morgans. I know probably Commissioner Wright does and maybe some of the board members, but they have done a lot for this community, started the stone, I think it's Storm Football for the youth. And I can remember a long time ago going to Dr. Morgan and I say, you know, you're picking all this money out of your pocket. And I think we went to the board at that time, Jack was with us, and we gave them $10,000 of tourism money to help them out with fields and whatnot because they were doing so much for the youth of Onslow County, but they do a lot for us. Both Commissioner Price and myself were a graduation for the Coastal Carolina Community College, 400-plus students. The rain held out, thank God. We had the, David Hedley, the new president of the college, that was his first one, what he solowed on his own, and he did an outstanding job, him and his staff of vice presidents. And that's all I have, Jack.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you for the budget.
Mr. Price?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Kelly for the Safe Digging Award and especially thank our EMS employees who do an outstanding job. Also, this past week, I was able to be a part of a speech contest as a judge. I'd like to thank Mr. Mark Bullris for inviting me to be a judge in the Onslow County Schools' speech contest on what it means to be a hero. And if you want to feel good about the future, just go to one of those. Those kids did a great job. They're unbelievable. They cited historical examples. They had, they had the gestures down. You could tell they had done that in the evenings before their parents. I don't know how many, I don't know how many times they practiced it, but they had it down, and I was just very impressed. They had 12 kids that gave speeches around the theme of what it means to be a hero, and so it was very impressive. Also, want to let you know, we did attend the county assembly day and thank you to the Onslow delegation that was able to meet with us, Representative Milas, Representative Phil Shepard, and Representative Cleveland. Senator Brown would have met with us, but he was in committee hearing at that time. He was at work, so he wasn't able to meet with us, but thank you especially to those representatives who did, were able to meet with us. And also today, I was able to attend the police officers memorial as all the commissioners were there today. And I was just really impressed with that and the opportunity to recognize the sacrifice of our police officers, all our law enforcement officers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Nat?
Well, first, I want to say thank you to all the EMS folks that were here, and then I too attended the ceremony today in the commons for the law enforcement memorial. You know, most of us here are either retired or former law enforcement, so it's always a touching moment for us because all of us know somebody that we've lost in the line of duty. And I would highly recommend, when you see a police officer or a county deputy or EMS person, go up and thank them. Just tell them that you appreciate what they do because I tell you, the EMS folks, even though I'm a cop, they've come to my house numerous times for my daughter's seizures. I saw a couple of them that have responded. My father, who is in a home who's fallen many times, they've responded and taken care of him. I can't thank you guys enough. You guys do a thankless job, but I wanted to say thank you for everything that you guys do. Also, I just wanted to thank David Cotton personally and publicly because a lot of people don't understand what the county manager does, and what you saw today was a glimpse of the budget. That budget process was a bear. But David and his staff, he kept it within the scope of our budget and what we wanted as far as priorities are concerned as commissioners. And our number one priority was not to raise taxes, okay? That was our goal. We wanted to focus in on the needs of the community and not the wants. And with that comes compromise. I mean, we give a little, then you have to give a little, but it's all done so that we can support a balanced budget. We don't have to worry about trying to raise everybody's taxes. And I commend you for what you did because I sat with him for several hours with...
The chairman.
And man, we went through a fine-tooth comb, through the budget with a fine-tooth comb, picking things and looking at things and trying to stick with our priorities. So outstanding job, Julie, you as well, because I know she played a part in that in terms of getting everything together and all the department heads. And speaking of which, I wanted to thank Ms. Sherry Slater out there. She, if you haven't realized, we're working really hard on this detox and crisis center and all the other things that are on our priority list. What people don't see, they don't see the hard work behind the scenes. You get, you get asked all the time, hey, how's that going? When's it going to be up? What are you guys doing? And you don't see the hard work that goes on behind the scenes, especially with the task force, especially last-minute things that you submit to the legislature up in Raleigh trying to get money. And as such, right now, we've, looks like we have $1.8 million given to us to help with the building, and it's free money. It came up as a surprise. Mr. Cotton jumped on it, along with Ms. Slater. We sent a memo up to Senator Brown. It was put into the budget for North Carolina, was approved. We're just waiting, I guess, for the Congress or the House to approve it, and it looks like it's going to go. And if that's the case, that's $1.8 million that we didn't have for this project that doesn't cost a taxpayer dime. And I'll tell you what, that's pretty impressive, and I'm excited about that. And finally, we've got several birthdays out there. I think we've got one, Mr. Scott Boss. Happy birthday to you, sir. Our clerk, she's shaking her head. I want to wish Julie a happy birthday. She's 30-something-ish. And as such, kind of make this a tradition, Julie. I want to give you the first Board of Commissioners from Onslow County Moon Pie Birthday Pie. So if you could, if you would come up and please take this. This is the budget, this is our budget right here. There you go. Happy, yes, you will, here. And lastly, I can't go without saying too, there's another special birthday. It's my wife's birthday today, and I know she's counseling right now and she's probably watching it on G10, so just wanted to say happy birthday to my lovely wife, Kelly, and she also is 30-something-ish, so, and I'll leave it at that, but thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Cotton and the budget, everybody that worked on the budget. It was quite a chore. I want to thank the emergency responders that came tonight and all of the work that you do. And one other thing that you may not know is that our fire marshal, Brian Kelly...
And one other thing that you may not know is that our fire marshal, Brian Kelly, this weekend graduated from Fayetteville State University with a bachelor of science degree in fire science. So we want to congratulate him for that. I know that's a lot of work to get, to work to get that done. So I thank everybody for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Well, everything that needed to be said has been said. I would say congratulations to all the EMS folks for their hard work and life-saving abilities and what they've done to support us. My aunt at a, down in Swansboro, that old saying, you see these commercials on TV, I fell and I can't get up. She didn't get hurt, but she did fall and she couldn't get up. And they come and she didn't have anything but praise for those folks, and we appreciate that norm and the training and the guidance that you have given them over there. Appreciate them being here tonight also. The Boy Scouts, I think Commissioner Buchanan hit it on the head about Hammocks Beach State Park. I think that's, I think that's a perfect venue for that. It does have water access. Deppy Park has a few guidelines on how we can use it and what we can use it for because it's in part of the agreement, the lease agreement. But it, not saying it can't be done, but it may be doable. I will say this, Camp Lejeune or Lejeune, as we're negotiating now with them to get the parcel of land in Verona that was cut off by the old Highway 17, I think, I can't remember how many acres it is, that, that may be conveyed to us, and it's all forest, so that might be another down the road campsite for the Boy Scouts there in Verona. I'm thinking it's like 37 acres. It's all forest.
I think it might be larger than that, Jack.
It might be.
I've said so many, I forgot what it is now. I think it's a good chunk of land.
But that might be another venue. Of course, there wouldn't be any water access, but we could put a drinking fountain out there, maybe. But anyway, that's a start, and that's down the road, but we don't know where we are with that negotiations right now. But I appreciate what the Boy Scouts do and the Girl Scouts because that's just a good way to get leadership ability started in our young adults and young kids and guidance. Other than that, thank you for, everybody for being here tonight. Happy birthday to all the people that had birthdays today, I have a bunch of them. And with that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.